The City of Oconomowoc Council Meeting for January 5th, 2021. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
If you could please rise.
Wides allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, and again, thank you for your patience with the delay in the start time for the council meeting. Call roll, please.
Alderman Spiegelberg. Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kowieski.
Here.
Alderman Rogers. Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Thank you all, and council members, if you can please remember to talk directly into your mic. We are having some hard time hearing that because of the hybrid virtual meeting that we have, so please do your best. Thank you. Did entertain a motion to approve the minutes for December 1st, 2020.
Go move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to entertain any comments or suggestions from the audience or from the citizens. Is anyone here that would like to make comment? If you could please state your name and address, and you have approximately two minutes.
Thank you. Matt Maroni, President, Wangard Partners, W-288 and 887 Bass Court, Waukesha, Wisconsin. So I wanted to just take a moment and say thank you. Thank you to the council members, thank you to the staff, thank you to the citizens of Oconomowoc. I mean, we have gone on an incredible journey here the last year and a half to pull together a plan that we think will do well for the citizens of this community and for the community as whole, and we're there. We're close to the finish line, and it's been through a lot of hard work, a lot of input, a lot of dialogue, and it was throughout this process very rewarding to have one of the biggest projects in the community come forward through the process, through the Plan Commission, with very little comment, you know, opposed for a project like this. It's remarkable, and that is due to all the hard work the staff and you folks have put together as far as making sure all the i's were dotted, all the t's were crossed as we move forward. So I want to say thank you for the process. We're anxious to get going. We want to move forward as quickly as possible, and I'm hoping tonight we'll start that journey together, because this is just the first step in a many-step process that we'll be back before you, working together to continually fine-tune and improve the plans. So a sincere thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other further comments from the audience that's here? I also want to remind everybody that we have a virtual meeting, and so I just want to check with our staff to see if we have any public comments virtually. Lori? Let's give them one, a couple seconds here if they all of a sudden want to raise their hand in the virtual meeting for public comment. Nothing further? Okay, let's then, let's move on to committee reports, please. Public services. Let's move forward with that. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. At the Public Services Committee that took place just prior to this, we discussed some options for West Wisconsin Avenue. This is the area from the four corners going west in front of the condominiums. We discussed an asphalt project, concrete project delay in order to incorporate larger projects. The committee at that time has made a recommendation to move forward with completing the work this year using concrete. It will be a 40-to-60-day project, and so that's the recommendation we're moving forward with, and we'll be coming back with bids at our next meeting for approval.
Any comments from council or comments for Mr. Frye? Alderman Rosak.
Two real quick ones. Mark, the park will pay for some of this concrete, correct?
Correct.
As part of their development agreement with the city to repair any areas they damaged in the road. Do we know what percentage that is?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Fair. The second point, you and I discussed prior to the meeting today of a timing of when to do this. For the record, I think the sooner the better. I think as we get into summer, I think it's going to get busier and busier downtown as we hopefully get through the pandemic. I know your concern was with school traffic right now, but I mean, school traffic will go until June, so with people coming in with fishing and boats to get on the lake and the traffic, I think is much higher at City Beach and those areas, I would encourage us to move forward as quickly as possible, you know, March, April, to get this forward.
And we'll discuss with the contractor to see when it works best for them in order to have all their crews in place to be able to get this thing done quickly.
Right. Thank you.
Did entertain a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zaffel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Before we move on to new business, we just have a statement from Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, coming up, thank you, Mayor. Coming up are some votes on Olympia Fields, and I just have a short statement I need to make. I will be recusing myself from these upcoming two votes, but before I do that, I want just two general comments and then just a quick explanation for the public and my constituents as to why I need to recuse myself. First, part of the New Deal is these reserve liquor licenses. It's my belief, and I've worked hard over the years, to keep those liquor licenses in the hands of the city to dole out as need be to community members and people that build businesses. I would suggest we give them one with the option to get more like any other development in town as needed. Second, I do think we need a little bit more time to review the design standards. We received the bulk of the package just brief recently, along with just some of the design requirements and pictures, so I do think we should get a little bit more time on that. That's the end of my comments with regard to the project, because I will be recusing myself. But with that being said, at our first meeting in December, I became aware of a potential conflict. Wangard has been working with the city on this project since about this time last year. Negotiations and presentations on this project were occurring regularly, and at the end of the August 2020, a Wangard-related entity, Cherry Water LLC, hired a partner in my firm to begin work on a litigation matter. This matter is not in any way related to this development or this project. However, my firm is obviously receiving fees for its work, and I had discussed this with our city attorney, Stan Riffle, who advised that this is not a conflict under the statutes and I could continue voting. However, while I agree it's not a technical conflict, I think in my heart, I believe I ethically need to recuse myself as there is some benefit coming to me and my firm from a Wangard entity. I feel it's the proper thing to do moving forward. I recuse myself from these final approvals. However, I do reserve the right to vote on future aspects of this project that don't relate to the approval of the project up or down. I think that's fair, and I think that's something I can do. Prior to today, I actually did discuss this statement with Matt Maroni from Wangard, and we, I went over the basics of this statement, and he generally approved and agreed and understood of my recusal. To date, I've generally been in favor of this project and have voted to move the process forward. Unrelated to this, I did vote in favor of blighting an area around this, which does not directly impact or affect Wangard, as Wangard has to bid on that property and parcels like any other developer in the city. Finally, this is the only recusal I've had to do in close to seven years on the council. It does kind of sadden my heart. I like to be part of these processes. Anyone who watched a show here over the years knows that I like to be part of these processes, dig in deep and have a good, robust discussion. So it's unfortunate that I have to recuse myself, but I do think this is the right decision, and I appreciate the mayor understanding that, and thank him for letting me have a quick spiel. I'm going to go sit down now.
Okay. And Alderman Rosak, on behalf of the city, thank you for your professionalism and engagement in all aspects here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to new business. We're going to kick that off on both Point 7A and 7B with comments from Mr. Duffy.
Sure. Given the timeframe that we have, I'll leave it up to the council. I could do an overview of the overall TIF project plan verbally or as PowerPoint. I know you've seen it about three times, so I'm going to look for your direction. Or do you want me to do the PowerPoint once again?
Verbal.
Verbal. Again, we have a 65.7-acre area, base value at about $14.35 million. Wangard is looking to redevelop this area. 35 acres for commercial purposes, 11 acres for multifamily, and additional enhancements for water quality, roadway rights-of-way. The city and the TIF project plan address various public infrastructure elements, finance through the Tax Incremental Financing District, roadway improvements, sanitary sewer, water main, as well as storm sewer improvements. This, as you do recall, we did, as was indicated previously, had to do a blight determination. Staff did that blight determination and determined that 88% of the area within this acreage is blighted and in need of rehabilitation. Second, it is appropriate to note, as it relates to the Tax Incremental Financing District, there's an 11.8-acre parcel, of which we've done a resolution of necessity. This project plan also incorporates the potential for that infrastructure and the acquisition of that property, given its critical position in this overall development. When all those things together, the redevelopment or the project plan costs, we have an initial investment of Phase 1 property acquisition, Phase 1 public improvements, upfront development incentive of $1.4 million, as well as TID creation expenses. The future investment or Phase 2 are additional public improvements. We're currently working on final design to what those ultimate phases are, but all those are identified in the maps provided in the project plan, as well as an additional $2.3 million Pago incentive for the developer related to the project. All in total, the total project plan area investment through the TIF district, $18.7 million. As we've had our continued conversations between the city and the developer and this public-private partnership, they've indicated a willingness to guarantee $64.5 million in investment phased over time between 2022 and 2026. We've allocated a $13 million projected investment increase or value increase for the remaining parcels, should the council make the policy decision to acquire the 11.8 acres. Given that total area investment of 77, that would result in roughly $77.5 million. Through our analysis and through the analysis, the but-for analysis that's required as part of state statute, and done on behalf of the city with Aylers and Associates, who've spoken to us before as well, we believe we can pay off this TIF district in the timeframe of 20 years. 20 years is an appropriate timeframe, given the blight determination, given the other aspects of redevelopment. TIF districts in the state of Wisconsin of this type can go for a period of 27. So through the process, we've tried to do the best we can to be able to work through that public-private partnership, negotiate the shortest term of repayment, as well as ensure guaranteed development, that the city's infrastructure investments and improvements investments in this area of the city are beneficial or paid back in a timely manner. So with that, I'll leave it with questions. If you have detailed questions about the schedules provided in the project plan, Phil Tassen from Aylers is here as well to address those specifics.
And before we move on to those additional questions, Attorney Riffle, can you just give a brief summary of the two items, 7A and 7B, in which the council is, has in front of them?
Well, of course, 7A relates to the project plan, which relates to setting up the TIF that would make this all possible, to create the Tax Incremental District that would basically fund outside of the city's general fund, all of the project that would be envisioned in the project plan. That will go, if you approve this tonight, it will go to the Joint Review Board on the 16th of this month, I believe. 20th. Whatever. And we fully anticipate that, based upon their discussions, that this would be approved. 7B relates to the incentive agreement, I call it. It's the TIF agreement that really gives all of the guts to how the monies would flow through that TID to get all of the infrastructure in place to deal with the project and the amounts of monies that would be incentives to the developer, who but for these monies would not be here tonight. So they're two separate things, but they're tied together. Obviously, if you're going to create the TID, you're going to go forward and work out the final details as it relates to the agreement that would fund all of the development within the TID. So that, is that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, thank you. And for the, for the public, council was in closed session going through all of the details earlier before the beginning of the common council meeting. I'd like to ask the developer, Mr. Maroni, if you could please come to the podium. There are some questions that our council members would like to ask you.
Oh, okay.
And I'd like to leave this now open to council if you have questions for the developer at this time. Oh. Alderman Mulder.
So in reviewing, in Exhibit J, talks about the wow factors and lists an amount, $220,000 to, and a series of improvements of removing trees, shoreline, reconditioning, and public art and things like that. It seemed to be a low figure for me, and I'm wondering, and we know this is going to be a high-quality development, and we want to make sure every piece is in line with that. It just seemed low, and I just wanted to get your thoughts on that, and there's a list of eight items here. You know, is that all achievable within that, within those funds?
Yeah, we believe it's achievable within those funds. We went out and had cost estimates, you know, kind of rough estimates for the cost of that, for that work. So is it, you know, precise? No, but it's, it's based on rough estimates, so it's reasonable.
So just following up, so we, we should expect that the eight items listed there would be completed then?
They'll be completed, yes.
Alderman Shellpepper.
That was my question.
Yeah, go ahead. If that, yeah, not a problem.
Or Kowieski.
So in here, in this exhibit, would you feel it fair that the approximate, there would be some change of verbiage that would identify the priority to deliverables of the items identified as opposed to the $220,000?
Are you suggesting, councilman, to just have a priority list, this, first this, then that, or?
That the following will be delivered, that it's your expectation that your costs associated with that is $220,000. If it's significantly more than that, that's not our problem. You're going to deliver.
We'll deliver on those, yeah. No problem.
That we have verbiage in there that reflects that.
Correct, yeah.
And remember, everybody talking to their microphones, please.
You should join a band.
Times seven. The agreement requires them to build that stuff.
Further questions from council?
Talk about the liquor agreement.
Alderman Ellis.
I think that's, that's the next part, isn't it? I mean, isn't that part of the development agreement? I mean, I don't have, I'd like to make a motion, you know, to make the amendment.
We just have a question here first from Alderman Ellis, please.
I just, yeah, I do have a question. We had received something today from you all, which gave us more of an understanding of what the potential of these buildings would look like. Why did it take so long to get?
Well, we originally, so this is a chicken and an egg kind of argument, you know, from, from our perspective, in that we're in a very preliminary stages of design, and people want to see kind of the full product of that design, but we're really not at that point. So we're picking elements out and trying to pull it together, and we had originally put something in Word description. So the exhibit is the exact same exhibit with pictures added, and the request to add pictures didn't come until, I would say, a little bit before New Year's Eve, and to contact our design professionals to be able to pull those pictures together takes a little bit of time with the break that we had. So would I have liked to have been able to respond immediately to that? Absolutely, you know, to that request. However, just with the holidays and the way things worked, the guts of the exhibit is the same. The only difference is there's pictures added now.
Alderman Kowieski.
That was the alderman that was in conversation.
Absolutely.
In regards to the vision boards that help to provide a visual representation to the written description.
Correct.
And, and we, to be fair, yes, we had that conversation last week to, to restate that, but it's been some, an expectation for, for quite some time, and I truly appreciate your effort to, to follow through and incorporate those into the final document that not only sets the framework visually for this body, but for the Architectural Commission and for the community moving forward. So it, it is still, while, while we got it today, we haven't had very much time to really reflect the visual tie to that, and for the community, at least I'll give an attempt to describe. If, if you say you're going to provide a four-door car, that's a great written description for what I'm going to get. You give me a picture of that four-door car, and it sets the expectation for what vehicle I'm going to be driving. That is in line with the, the enhancement to what we were looking for. There, there are still some, some items that we had discussed during closed session that I think need to be vetted out on, on that. You may, in this discussion, get some examples from that. We want to give you examples for that in our discussion. Clarity and certainty are definitely something that you need to walk away with in deliverables and that the community needs as well. So I just wanted to kind of continue that, the conversation that Alderman Ellis gave. I think there's some other aldermen here that'll kind of add to that, and that potential request for delaying that to allow for staff and others to look at that, to ensure that we're comfortable with that framework as it applies, in no way would represent a delay in, in the project.
And so I think we're, we look at it, and it, I truly appreciate, open dialogue, open discussion. We're all trying to get on the same page here with, you know, kind of what this project's going to be, you know, in the end, and input is welcome throughout the process. And like I said, this is the very beginning of it, and so from, from our vantage point, time is crucial. It really is. We want to get moving. We need to get this infrastructure in the ground this construction season. We will not unleash our professional engineers, and you will not, on the city half, release yours to start work to get this in place until there's an agreement in place. That's a prudent decision by everybody, right? I think you can talk to your engineers, you can talk to our engineers. They're saying the current schedule that we have is very aggressive, doable, but aggressive. If we delay, my concern is we will push things back, we won't get all the infrastructure in, and we lose time, and most importantly, increment going as quickly as possible. This is a big enough deal that it's all, in all of our interest to move. So we also have the protection in that exhibit of the Architectural Committee. They have input. We cannot move forward with a building permit without their approval. So there's time to continue to refine, you know, that exhibit in particular, if you want. I think there's Stan, the city attorney, and our attorney, Debbie, can figure out a way to do it, but to keep the agreement moving and to keep the project moving. So that's my biggest concern about this, and everybody's heard it from me, time, 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 because this deal is contingent upon getting moving this construction season. So that's just my only concern. Happy to continue to work, continue to refine, totally open to that, but delaying, I'm not as comfortable with that.
Alderman Rogers.
I just have a question. It's been brought to my attention that there's a supposed easement that runs on the private road, including Unity, or however that's defined based upon ownership of property. How does that get handled in this from your perspective? Or doesn't it?
May I call my legal counsel up? Who's had a chance to look at this issue, because it popped up yesterday. So Debbie.
Everybody's always happy to hear from the lawyers, right? My name is Debbie Tomczyk with Reinhardt Burner. There's a lot of lawyers and friends in this room, so we appreciate that. Thank you for the question. We have done extensive title survey, easement review. This whole Olympia property is a maze.
Yes, 100%.
Of easements and restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. Based on the review that we've done, we do know that there is a private easement. We are not aware that it actually benefits a property that I believe has expressed a concern about that. The agreement that's before you tonight is the development agreement between the private developer and the city. And in that agreement, we also have tried to go above and beyond and try to address some concerns we've heard, including we've heard a concern about visibility. That's not addressed by the easement issue, but it is addressed in our development agreement. The other thing that we've also done in our development agreement is provide that there will always be continuous access. So we've tried to go with our agreement with the city, above and beyond, to make sure the city's comfortable on that. Well, we are continuing to work with and happy to continue to work with any and all other property owners in the area to address their concerns. Those are really private concerns, not so much city concerns. Did I answer your question?
Fair enough, but no, I guess, I mean, I just want to know who's on the line if there is a problem.
Us. The private developer. That's a private issue.
Fair. Now you did, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Alderman Kowieski.
This would be for Attorney Riffle.
Hello?
Hello. So while we were discussing this and, and how we could handle moving portions of this forward while reserving some time to, to have this reviewed by staff and, and give some input.
Yes, sir.
Can you outline that structure and how we can do that?
Well, you could approve the agreement subject to the revisions if, I, I think you're all going to vote to give them one liquor license reserved as opposed to three, and have me put some language in and say that, you know, we will obviously, if others are available within the timeframe, get them to them, and I could work that out with, you know, council, and then approve it subject only to a final approval at the next meeting by this council of Exhibit D. How's that sound?
That, that's, your words are beautifully chosen.
No, you.
Alderman Mulder.
We have a mutual understanding.
So you'd need a motion to, how would, how would that be?
We're not ready.
Mayor, not me, I'm not the mayor.
We still have questions. Alderman Mulder, please.
Well, first of all, you got to prove the project plan, okay? Before you do anything with this agreement.
Alderman Mulder.
Thank you.
So Matt, if we would do as attorney suggested, it leaves you a little bit half-pregnant there, where you've been approved but not approved. What, and you, you're obviously sensing there's some, some concerns and questions out there, and you talk about the need to move quickly, and then you said this construction season. So to me, this construction season, January 19th, is still well within this construction season. Is this, is there, are you concerned if there's a two-week delay? Is that, is that impeding your ability to complete the work?
So it moves the Joint Review Board meeting back, right?
I think.
No, it will not. I thought they had to have a, had to be approved for 14 days. Yeah, that was my understanding, that the, that the Joint Review Board.
If they approve the project plan, you're good to go.
Okay.
So they're going to, they're going to approve one without the other, then?
What I hear.
Because I've heard before, they wanted all of it approved at the same time, so.
If I could try, with your permission, Mayor.
Go ahead.
What I'm hearing is they would approve the project plan tonight. They would approve all of the aspects and elements of. They would approve all of the aspects and elements of the joint, or of the incentive agreement, as I call it, except a revision that's satisfactory to the city attorney relating to pairing the liquor licenses down to one, with language that would say, we'll, you know, gladly, once you use that one, give you as many as you need as soon as you got other people building in there. And then we, they will review and take up the issue of Exhibit D at the next meeting, and assuming that any concerns are addressed, then that will be the final approval. What that does for you is that it gives you certainty that there are no other issues other than those two. Well, actually, other than the one, because whatever we say, whatever I say, with regard to the liquor license is final. And then they'll come back and discuss Exhibit D the next common council meeting. I know how reasonable you guys are, and how accommodating you are, and there will be no problems with it. Just make Lou happy, and you're good.
I'd like to entertain a motion for Item 7A at this time.
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alderman Shellpepper.
So do we, okay, so do we, we'll wait till the 7B, then, to make the motion to amend the?
Yes.
Yep, good, good. Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Ro, oh, excuse me. Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
My ears. I'd like to entertain a motion for Item 7B, that's a little bit more detailed.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend 7B, Page 10, Section F, to strike the, the city shall issue three Class B reserve liquor licenses and replace that, shall issue one Class B reserve liquor license. And then as well is amend, let's see, would it be Exhibit D? Is that what we said? To, for final approval in two weeks?
Yes.
Yep. Is there anything else that needs to be added to that, Attorney Riffle?
No, I would suggest you vote on the amendment first, and then vote on the rest of it. In other words, he's moving to amend.
Right.
Yes.
I'll second.
Second, do we have any further discussion on the amendment? City Attorney or City Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess I don't quite understand, I know we approved the project plan for the Tiff District, so that keeps things moving forward, which is in the positive direction that I think everyone wants to see. I guess I don't understand the need to approve a development, or the tax increment agreement only in part, let's say 98% of the way there. I think through the discussion and maybe just direction, that those are the two items that are left open, you know, some consensus and agreement there, that that's really all that's coming back to the council at the next meeting. It seems kind of odd to approve an agreement in part.
Further discussion?
Well, I think the, to that, I think the intent is to show good faith. I didn't have my question answered before, so I do want that answered. If we were to approve it impartial, we are still, the 20th date still holds, and it will still move forward at that point, we're.
True.
Locked in on that. So this is somewhat, whichever way we go is somewhat irrelevant, because we can still hit that date as long as everything's.
I think that's a good, that's a good summary, yes. Alderman Zappel.
Can we get an opinion from Counselor, please?
Well, the rationale here is you're indicating the approval of the agreement with one amendment, and subject to your being accepting of one exhibit. What it basically does, it gives the developer comfort that they're not going to hear any further revisions of any other part of the agreement between now and then. That's plain and simple. Certainly, between now and then, I mean, your administrator's 100% correct, that he said, well, I changed my mind, I don't want to do it. But I guess it is a comfort, not resolution, but a comfort approval, so that they understand that you're, you know, completely on board with everything else in the agreement, other than the one issue, and that relates to Exhibit D, because you've already directed how the rest of the agreement's going to be done.
Alderman Zappel.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate that, and I think we do want to put the confidence in regards to the developer. This also puts some confidence in regards to people in our community that are out of work. There are a lot of people in the construction field that are just chomping at the bit to get back to work, and I think the number that was given to us at one point was, was it 500, Matt? 500 people that would be put to work building this project, and I think that's real. With 1,000 people at the end, that would be put to work. Especially in these tough times, I know the economy is, could go either way, especially with the politics going on in DC right now and everywhere else. But I think if we can give the assurance to the developer to get moving forward, we're going to be doing some good things for the people in our community that are out of work. Because I can guarantee you this, you have constituents in your districts that are out of work right now that work in the construction field, whether they're an operating engineer, carpenter, plumber, electrician, whatever, you know, they're looking to get to work. And I think this is the assurance that we can give our community and the developer if we hold off in regards to the last thing that was presented.
Alderman Kowieski.
In discussions with the developer, with One Garden, the comment of clarity and certainty are things that our community, the developer, and this body are looking for. So to provide clarity and certainty to 99% of what has been brought forward, and allow us the ability to go back to our residents and citizens and say, we've had the opportunity to look at this important part of it with clarity and certainty, is another reason to approve as provided with the amendment.
So we have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments on this amendment? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
So moving forward, we need to consider and act on the development agreement. We've made a vote on the amendment, so we need to make a motion for the agreement itself.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Just call roll, oh, excuse me, Alderman Rogers.
Just a quick question. I know, Stu, you've said this before. So this is the developer agreement, or this is your incentive agreement? What?
This is the incentive agreement. When they start, you know, digging dirt, putting pipe in, dealing with the actual infrastructure, there will be a developers' agreement that deals with that. Many of the items related to financial security and that sort of thing, to make sure that they follow through, are already in this agreement. So we, I didn't, I recommended not putting in our standard form model developers' agreement, number one, because it doesn't really relate. Number two, it's premature to put together the final developers' agreement, because the design is not done. So that was a reason why you have a blank Exhibit J, or K, or whatever it is, because you can't, you can't deal with it now. That will be in place later, and it's also covered by your ordinances, that it will be required before they start digging dirt.
Alderman Ellis.
Okay, so I just need a little clarification here. What are we voting on?
You're voting on the incentive agreement, the one you just approved to amend.
Okay. Thank you.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kowieski.
Aye.
Alderman Rogers.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to our next order of new business, Consider Act on the Primary Election for February 16th, 2021. Our Clerk, Diane Conan, can you lead us, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I've put a memo at your stations, giving you an update as of 5:00 PM today on how many people and who filed candidacy paperwork for each of the four Aldermanic districts. Since there are no more than two candidates that filed for any of the districts, it will not be necessary for you to take any action on whether or not to hold a primary. We had one candidate for each of the districts, and it was the incumbent. District One, Karen Spiegelberg. District Two, Lou Kowieski. District Three, Andy Rogers. And District Four, Kevin Ellis. And as of 5:00 PM, the timeline has had closed, so we will not be needing a primary.
Do we actually need to make a motion on that?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Diane Conan? Alderman Zappel.
So there's no primary for the Aldermanic, but there'll be a primary for the state superintendent and any other judicial races?
I have not been given the official word from the county clerk, but it is my understanding there will be a primary for at least that office, but nothing official has come through yet.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome you back, Alderman Rozak.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's move on to staff reports. Staff reports at the Roosevelt Skate Park Project. Mr. Hefner.
Good evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. That's my transition to make sure. Ivan, are we doing okay so far? What am I missing? Take control. No problem. We felt at the beginning of the year, it'd be a good time to kind of recap and get everybody up to speed on our skate park project and the process we're looking to go down. So if you recall back in August of last year, the City Council approved the skate park project at Roosevelt Park through the capital budget process. The council agreed to provide 125,000 of the 250,000 of funds needed through the undesignated fund balance, with all the remaining funds to be privately fundraised. The original concept plan for the skate park was to place modular equipment on the existing concrete pad at Roosevelt Park, and I have a picture of what the current pad looks like there. And then we showed you the concept, let me get this, and this was the concept plan that you saw that night. So since that time, in late September, thanks to Alderman Kowieski and some others, we formed a community committee to create an RFP for design build for the project and to fundraise. And after doing a lot of additional research and discussion, the committee has determined that they think the best quality and final product for the community would be to build a custom-built concrete skate park. And I'm going to show you just a couple of quick pictures here. So this is the modular equipment, this is Watertowns, this is Waukesha's, and this is Dullfields, which you might be familiar with. These are good skate parks, but I think the community here is looking for a great one. And part of the issues with modular is, especially the transition area, you'll see where it's metal meets the concrete, and just doesn't give the true smooth ride that skaters look for. So we've done some research, some concrete, this is Brookfield, they're one of the originals. This goes back probably 17 years. Probably okay, but not as good as some of the newer ones. This is West Dallas, they're actually doing some improvements. And then the most recent one, I'll show you a few pictures of, is Fort Atkinson, which Matt might be a little bit familiar with. Theirs was built actually in May of 2020, so it's the newest one in the state, and all reviews have been excellent. So here shows you like a bowl concept, you can go back and forth, a half-pipe, there's some rails and steps and other things to it. So just because of transitions, the quality, and talking to a lot of skaters, it's really the trend now in not just Wisconsin, but the United States, to go to the custom-built concrete. So we wanted to bring that forward to you, because that is a change of what we talked about originally. If we go down this direction of the concrete as well, the budget will go up a bit. Right now, we're guessing and estimating instead of 250,000, we're about 325,000. We would still make sure that any money above 125 would be privately fundraised, so we're not asking the council for additional funds, we're just trying to bring this to your attention. The city would, similar to the 517 project, accept checks and receive donor checks for this process. What our plan is to do is to send out an RFP probably yet this week, if the council's in agreement with our plan. But the selected company would be asked to do a number of things for us. And the first would be to complete a community engagement activity or survey, just to ensure that everybody in the community's had a chance to give input. We've done some, Alderman Ellis and I have done some of the high school, Alderman Kowieski's done a bunch in the community, but we want to make sure we're hitting everybody to get the ownership. So it's a key piece that just, it's a couple-week process that helps us get to that point that everybody's in agreement. Secondly, they would come up with a final concept design and an accurate cost estimate. Needing to know if 325 is accurate, if it's going to be up or down from that point. Once that's completed and we get the cost estimate, then they complete the final design and specs, and that leads us into the construction and the build. The overall goal for the whole group and our community is still to have this completed in this year of 2021. We also take, what we plan to do after the RFPs come back in from skate park design build companies, is the committee would interview these folks and narrow it down and have an approval or a recommended approval. It would go to our Parks and Recreation Board as an approval process, and then obviously it would come back to the City Council. We're looking at the February 16th council meeting for that. So again, everything we've heard has been really positive about having a skate park in the community, but because of some of the changes with the direction of the type of material and the cost, we just want to bring this forward to you, answer any kind of questions you might have, make sure that there's consensus in our direction of this committee, and then we'll move forward. So happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your looking at my slides.
Do you have any questions from council? Alderman Zappel.
Thank you, Director Hefner, for putting this together, the presentation. Just a question here, I read in Alex's article recently, The Enterprise, that the city was going to accept donations for this project. Who made that decision?
Something that we discussed internally. Alderman Kowieski suggested it first, and between Matt, myself, and the mayor, we've had that discussion to.
What's the process for that? Is, I think we need, if, it doesn't seem like there's a process, it's just out there.
Matt, would you make a comment, Trebatowski?
Sure, yeah, Alderman Zappel and City Council. I would say I had similar concerns with that, not knowing if there had been an established process in place in the past, and looking at it, that it would be good if we are going to, as a city, especially if we're going to budget for something, and say that we're relying on a certain percentage of it being donations, that we do have a process for going forward and selecting a committee that's going to, or an individual or a champion that's going to move forward and do that fundraising, and then also making determinations on who decides, you know, who goes, who is in charge of that, as well as if the city would be the one that would receive those funds. Coming into this later, you know, I learned about it more recently, and I spoke with both Director Hefner and Alderman Kowieski, and I think together they have done a good job in selecting a solid core group of people to be on that committee to work with the design and to move forward with the fundraising, they have.
It just concerns me moving forward, if, say we do.
Yeah.
Have a project of, say, a splash pad or something, or, you know, a piece of art or something that the city funds part of, and then we ask the community to raise funds for the other. I just think we should set a process, maybe it goes to, say, the Finance Committee, or, I don't know, whatever committee is associated with that, whether it's the parks or whatever. You know, I just personally think we should have some sort of process in regards to that before that decision's made, or, you know, we set policy here from the council that says, hey, the city administrator, or the city finance director, or so-and-so makes that decision, so it's not just thrown upon.
Yeah, I mean, we would definitely want that direction from the council, and if that would go to the Finance Committee or another body, to let us know how that's done moving forward. It sounds like we've had other projects in the past and with donations, and it's, based on the size, there's been different methods of how those get collected.
I just want to be a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars, so our constituents and everyone can understand that in regards to this, that decisions aren't just being made, whether it's donated for this. I think this is a good project moving forward, you know, I know it's going to be utilized a lot, I see a lot of other skate parks being utilized, but I just think we should set a policy, and people shouldn't just be making decisions in regards to this off the fly.
Alderman Rozak.
Alderman Zappel, you know, that's exactly what we did with 517. Are you critical of that project?
Well, no, we made the decisions here that they would accept the funds.
No, we did not, no.
Oh, no, we didn't.
No, we did not.
No, not at all.
The difference is that. No, the difference is that city administrator and the mayor made the decision because we had, it was an emergency funding option. The fundraising committee for 517 spent six weeks trying to find somebody to fill, to do the, to be the vehicle to raise the money. The difference in this process is that both the mayor and the city administrator find out, found out about this through the papers.
Found out about what?
That we were going to do the fundraising through the city, and that we were going to accept checks. That's the difference.
What process? This, this one with the, with the skate park?
With the skate park. So, that's, that's the difference between the two of them. And really, it's, I think we both like both projects. I think that what we want to do is make sure that we try to develop a process moving forward because I think we're all in favor of those.
Well, then, I completely agree with Alderman Zappel. I think no matter how the money's coming in for whatever the project is, that decision should be made by policy of council.
I'm saying moving forward, yes.
Yeah, for, for everything, whether it's, whether it's, you know, build a park, or it's this one, or the next project, that, that decision should be made, or at least presented to the councils and options.
Well, I agree with you, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the issue. The problem is that neither of the governing leaders had any clue that this was happening. So, it's kind of hard as the mayor and the city administrator to find out in the papers. And so, it's, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. What I want to do is take, we're at a good place. We have a great project here, and we have a great project here, and I think it's wonderful. But I think maybe that might be a good idea, Alderman Zappel, to try to come up with a process so that it's really clear. All we're trying to do is define that.
Yeah, I'm just moving forward. Let's establish a process in regards to future projects or whatever.
Yeah, because I, I mean, on the 517 project, for instance, I did not know that we were accepting funds through the city until I read it in the paper. So, if this happened the same way, that's probably not the way it should be done either. I think...
The only difference here is that the city administrator had no clue, nor did the mayor. That's the difference. And it's, there's no blame, we're just trying to say how to move forward.
And I'm not trying to, to cast dispersions on anyone. I, I agree with, with John. I think we should have a policy in place for accepting funds, whether it's 225,000 or 1.3 million, and that should come through the council to decide how that's collected.
Yeah. Matt Trevituski, do you have any other comments on that? And I'll go over to Alderman Kowieski.
No, I would say, you know, I think both projects are on the right track, and everything has been working out well, but yes, it would be beneficial to get that direction and policy, however you want to define it, from the finance committee and ultimately the council on how we work with those projects moving forward, just to ensure that everybody is understanding of the projects and everyone's on the same page, and the council wants to move forward with.
And however the council wants to do it, then that'll help us allocate what resources are needed in bookkeeping and finance. So, if we do more things like this, it comes at a cost. So, we just want to think of that through. Alderman Kowieski?
Just to provide some, some information in regards to that, we have, we did go through a bit of a process, I would say, in that there was a, a group of individuals, both public and private, that comprised a committee. There is discussion associated with various ways that, that funds could come in, and we used the 517 as, as kind of a footprint to follow in. There was discussion with Lori Sullivan to, to make sure that we were allocating the right notes on the checks that would come in, things of that nature. So, there wasn't, I, I want to make sure this council understands and the, the community understands, there wasn't any one individual that made a unilateral decision to accept checks.
Why, I categorically disagree, Alderman. You, you didn't tell me, and you didn't tell Matt, and you didn't get approval for the process, but there's no policy in place, I think, which is what Alderman Zappel's saying. So, let's take a really good thing that we have and just create the process. But there, there was no approval for this to run through the city, ever.
There was direction from this body for the community go out...
This body?
Correct. There is...
What body?
The council.
To go forward, yeah, you're doing a great job on that.
And, and to request that the community provide money to, to bridge the gap on the skate park.
Agreed. I think that's a great thing.
Yep.
It's just how do you run the finances? That's all we're talking about. Did, was there any, was there, was there, anybody gave you approval to do that? Yes or no?
Yeah, yes.
Who?
Huh?
Who gave you approval?
I would, I would tell you right now that in that committee meeting, there was discussion with Director Hefner, and we made that decision, not unilaterally, but as a, as a joint body. I'm not throwing...
Well, Craig, would you comment on that, please?
Are we at a court of law?
I want to make sure that the facts are out there.
If I'm wrong, I'm, I'm wrong, but I didn't, I didn't say we're going to do this, and that's how it's going to go.
I was not the person that developed the idea.
No, I did. Right? But I didn't, I didn't say this is what we're going to do. I, if, if you want to have this discussion here, that's, that's fine.
No, it's fine. Did you approve it, Craig, that it could be run through the city?
It wasn't my decision.
Okay. I'm just looking at the process. I think what we don't want to do is beat each other up.
I think that's the truth.
But what we're trying to do with council and all of these things is create really good, tight processes because it'll be more efficient, and I think we'll actually get more stuff done. So, while I'm arguing or contesting your viewpoint, Alderman, it's not to make you look bad or to do anything.
Don't feel like I look bad at all.
It's, it's try to come up with a process because we can't just have anybody just say, hey, well, the city's going to accept checks. And so, let's take where we are. We have two great projects, and let's move them forward.
Well, yeah.
Alderman Mulder?
I just, I'm going to agree because we have other things we've, like with the pickleball group. I mean, there are other, other projects like this. This is what we're trying to do more and more, and it's the, there needs, and that's a small, that's a few thousand dollars perhaps. We want a really easy, simple process that we know exactly what to do, so it doesn't have to come back to this body every time and wait two weeks to approve accepting checks up to $2,000. So, I think it's, I'm in favor of that because I see this as a larger issue moving forward.
Yeah, but sometimes when things don't go quite right, really good things happen from it, so that's how I view this. Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, I hope we can get a good policy moving forward. I, I'll be honest with you. This discussion, how it started, felt like a hit job on one of the Alderman. And I don't know why I'm getting that feeling, but that's the way 517 was set up. I think that was kind of...
A little process.
Again, I didn't know how 517, we were going to collect the money. I don't care. I'm happy the way we're doing it, but...
So, there's no hit job here.
I just had questions and concerns in regards to it, because I read in the paper, and I remember hearing at council, we approved it, but I just want to have a policy for moving forward, so we don't have stuff that's coming on the horizon, whether it's pickleball or whatever, you know.
And I, I completely agree with that process. What I'm saying is I think we, we've talked about not airing dirty laundry, and it felt like we just did. So, I, I think it's, you know, it's not conducive to what we're trying to do here, so.
Alderman Mulder?
You know, he's trying to, to get the project moving, and I, I'm sorry.
Well, we're trying to open up communication and transparency, Alderman Rozak, and that's what we're trying to do here. And so, we're just taking and saying, hey, how do we move this forward? Let's just use this and go forward in a positive direction. I was targeted in what I said because those are the facts.
Fine.
And I'm very, very passionate that this thing goes forward, so I'm really happy with the work that's done. So, hit job, I categorically disagree with.
But then, then why have the debate and make the comment, then? Why, why don't we just move forward? John's statement was perfect. Let's create a policy. I agree with that 100%. Let's make the policy, but then let's not get into the, the, you know, putting Craig on the spot and putting Lou on the spot. He's trying to do something that we've been talking about for 15 years, so I, I, I'm sorry, Lou. I hope you keep working on the project.
Call the question. Call the question. Alderman Ellis.
And I too want to apologize. I want to thank you for picking the ball up. You know, I, I had the, the initial dream, and you went ahead and said, you know, I want to go ahead and, and, and help you with it. And so, I want to really appreciate, I appreciate what you've done so far. Thank you.
Any further comments?
And I just asked to make sure, because...
I have an excellent question.
I do want us to go in the right direction. I think it's an awesome project, and truly, everybody I've talked to in the community is very positive about it, because you know how it goes. Skateboarding can have that connotation. People are fantastically positive about it. So, I just want to make sure that we're going in the right direction with a concrete idea. Yes, it might cost a little more money, but if we can find people to fundraise for it, I think it makes sense, but I'll throw that out to the council. It's not a vote, I just want to, I guess, get opinion.
Alderman Mulder?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at you through the... I know, I'm trying to. So, first, the, the pad that we had there was too small for the modular system, so I'm sure it's quite small. For, if that's where you're still envisioning it at Roosevelt, do we have sufficient space there? The one in Fort looked really big. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward if that we can get the funding for it. You're, you're feeling good about that space?
Yes, actually, it would be in a very similar vicinity. The, the question that whoever we hired to do this will have to come up with is, can we use that same, usually construction you wouldn't build on top of this pad, but maybe you can, or maybe it's just off to the north or west of it. So, it's going to be in that general vicinity, maybe some of the pack can be used and part of it isn't. So, that'll be a determination by the company.
Second, if, you know, if we're talking about skating this year, you must feel pretty confident about being able to raise the money. You've got some good donors lined up, I understand.
Yeah, behind the scenes, there's some great donations, and I've also talked to some of the companies, because that's another question, just as you heard, we got to keep moving through the construction season. Is there capacity and timing with all this? And yes, if we can get this approved near the end of February and run through the agreements and contracts and get started in March to, to define this and get the design going, they feel very confident that their crews can, can work in 2021.
Sure.
So, because of the connotation of skate parks, have we spoken directly to any of the neighbors right there? There isn't anybody really close to that spot, but there are, it is a neighborhood. Are you planning to?
Yeah, we'd, we'd like to involve, Kevin, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I do, yes. There's been conversation. As a matter of fact, how this originally got started was I was over at Roosevelt, kind of looking at things, and some of the neighbors were there, and I said, hey, how would you like, you know, the guys to have a skateboard park here? Or, at that time, I wanted it actually to be at where the police station is at this point. And that was my second option, and there was not one individual that stated to me, no, we don't want that categorically. As a matter of fact, they were quite excited about that because it's going to bring something to the community that we absolutely need at this point. I, I don't know if it's just because, like, if somebody says to you, hey, I'm driving a red car, I'm coming down the street, and you see nothing but red cars, but I, I have noticed that there's a tremendous amount of skateboarders out there right now, and they are looking for some area at which they can go ahead and utilize their, their, their sport. So, I think this is a great place. I think this is a great area. I'm excited about it. I'm, I'm hoping that the funding can come all together and that going after, especially after last year, that we can give this community some hope, and especially our, our kids. You know, we're constantly complaining about them being in places where they're not supposed to be. And if I was an 18-year-old kid and I had nothing to do, I'd get myself in trouble too. So, now what we're doing is we're giving them the ability to get themselves out of trouble in a sense and utilize those skateboards and those longboards and things along those lines. So, I think this is really good. And Matt, I 100% agree. We're kind of getting off, 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 off the beaten path here. At the end of the day, this is something that is going to make the community better, period. And I, I've tried a number of years. Finally, we have somebody who's, who's been hired and said, this is a good thing, we're going to get this done, and he's taken the ball, and how dare we go ahead and start pointing fingers? This is not the time to point fingers. This is the time to come together collectively, applaud those that are going to be cutting those checks, whomever they may be, maybe Lou knows them, I don't know. But let's get this, get this project started for the kids of this community. I'm done.
Any further comments? Thank you, Craig.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
You got a higher grade answer there?
The RFP is going out.
Let's go ahead and move on to reports and comments from Alderman. Any comments?
I actually do have one, and I mentioned this the last time.
I don't know what's been done, and maybe somebody can bring me up to speed, but we are, where I think it's important that we're having these Zoom, if you want to call it, conferences, and people have the ability to kind of, to, to look in on our meetings, which I think is a very important thing, so that we can all communicate. There is a body of people out there that we may not be hitting, and those that are deaf. And I, I believe that we need to look into doing something to give them the ability to also participate in, in this. So, I don't know if, if, Mayor, if you can bring me up to speed, or Matt, if you can bring me up to speed, but now I'm making it, I, I, this needs to be done. This is a people group that are just as important as those that can hear.
I don't have, I don't have any updates for you. Do you have any?
No, I don't have an update, but we'll look into seeing if there's an option. I, I think that YouTube is able to be in, put in the captioning, so we'll see if that, if we can exercise that option.
Okay, now, I, I will tell you that the last meeting specifically came over to you, and I said that need to be looked at, and if you hadn't looked at it at this point in time, that kind of upsets me a little bit.
Well, I apologize for, for that, Alderman Ellis.
I need that to be looked at. There's people out there that we need to hear from.
Alderman Rogers, you had a, I had your hand up before, and I missed you, and didn't come back. Did you have a question for Craig?
No.
Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay, thanks. I'm trying to make sure I get everybody. Alderman Mulder?
So, I am ecstatic about the slate of candidates that we're putting forward. One year of sparring with you people is not enough, so I really have, have learned so much and so little in, in one year, so I'm glad you're all coming back. I think it's going to be another, another fun year going along and riding with you guys, so.
Yeah. Alderman Zappel?
Just briefly echo what Alderman Mulder said there. Congratulations to Lou, Kevin, Karen, Andy. I look forward to knock on wood, serving with you another year, barring a rating or whatever. But I got some friends watching the meeting in DC. One of my friends, it was pretty good news to wake up to on Christmas morning. As I said at the last meeting, my family, we were staying at home, my wife and three boys. We didn't see family members. I basically dropped the gifts off to my parents' house. They slid the gifts out the door. We, we moved forward on that, went home and had Christmas Eve and Christmas morning, but Christmas morning, one of my good friends, Sam, got engaged, and Ben in Washington, DC. Congratulations, Sam and Ben. That was very good news to hear. I'm only giving him a shout out because he asked me to have an Aldermanic proclamation issued, and I said, I don't know if I can do that or not, but I will issue a congratulations at a council meeting, so congratulations, Sam and Ben. Love is love, guys. Congratulations.
Any further comments from Alderman? Any further comments from Alderman? Alderman Rozak.
I like to do this when we have a big topic to discuss, but we don't seem to spend a lot of time in it. So if people that are watching understand that, there was a lot of effort that went into the project we voted on tonight, both kudos to our city staff, Matt, Bob, the mayor, Stan. There was a lot of work that went in behind the scenes. There was a lot of negotiations. There were a lot of meetings. There was a lot of emails. I was involved with some of that. And sometimes you watch us that are watching in the ether, like, wow, there was only, you know, six, seven comments, and there wasn't a lot of changes. Well, because we've done a lot of homework, and we've done a lot of the background work, especially with the staff and the mayor's office. So I think kudos to everyone to get that project moved forward and off the ground. So I could not stand sitting back there and not take...
I saw your body language.
It was painful.
Alderman Ellis.
Yeah, I too. I wanted to mention that, and thank you for bringing that back up. Mayor, one of the things that you said at the time that you were running is that you wanted to make sure that we had all the information to be able to make the decisions of which we needed to make. And I can thank you. It's made it's made our lives much easier when we get it, instead of an hour before saying, we got to do it tonight, to a week in advance, giving us the ability to ask questions. And if we don't ask those questions, now it's our fault, not the city's fault.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the comment, but it's something that Matt and I have talked about, Matt Trebatowski, a lot. And we're getting better. We're still not as good as we'd like to be, and we'll continue to strive for that. Any further comments from Alderman? Last comment is from me. When I came into this position as mayor, there were a lot of different systems and things in place, and there was a lot of processes that, one, weren't working. There are processes that aren't defined. And I think we're starting to do a pretty good job at that, from ordinance updates to just the issue we talked about tonight, is how do we develop that process so it's clear and easy for people to do? Alderman Kowieski, if you feel I've insulted you or offended you in any way, I just want to go on record, that's not my intent. My intent is to help the council understand what those processes are so we don't go around the process. And this process for the funding was never in place. And that's why I think your suggestion of trying to put that onto the docket is really good because then there won't be any conflicts with it moving forward. And so whether it's that, whether it's a zoning thing, any of those, we're trying to increase the efficiency. But all that is in with talking, communication, and transparency. And we're still going to have some more hiccups as we go forward. And I think we're making a lot of really good progress, and my hat's off to all of you because you do the voting. It's up to you to define that policy, and my hat's off to you. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?